Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council and San Bruno Public Financing Authority Meeting of October 24, 2017. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please. Vicki?
Yes. Councilmember Marty Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Rico Medina?
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Here.
Vice Mayor Ibarra?
Here.
Mayor Ruane?
Here.
Director Marty Medina?
Here.
Director Rico Medina?
Here.
Director O'Connell?
Here.
Director, is it Vice Director Ibarra? And Director Ruane?
Here. Marks Efron, would you lead us into pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, without borders, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a number of announcements this evening. The first one is Nancy Kraus here?
Mr. Mayor, I don't see Mrs. Kraus in the audience. The statement that she wished to provide is a little bit lengthy, but I believe she would appreciate if I was able to read it.
That's fine.
And I'd be happy to do that if it's a council's interest.
Yeah, please.
It'll take me just a second to find it, so if you wanted to go on to one of the other items, I can, we can come back.
We'll hold the first announcement. The second one is Red Ribbon Week. And that's why we're wearing these red ribbons. Chief, would you walk us through that, please?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Once again, the city of San Bruno is pleased to join the State Attorney General's office in participating in Red Ribbon Week from October 23rd, which was yesterday, through the 31st. Red Ribbon Week is a national program that began in 1985 in response to the murder of a DEA agent. Ingrid's parents and their children began wearing red ribbons to raise awareness of the destruction that drugs can cause. Over the years, the red ribbon has evolved into not only raising this awareness, but including a pledge or a commitment by our communities to remain drug-free. The Police Department would like to thank the San Bruno Park School District and staff from all the city departments for supporting and participating in this very worthwhile cause. And if folks are interested in more information, they can visit redribbon.org or the Police Department's social media sites, including Facebook, Twitter, and Nextdoor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief. Connie, are you ready yet?
Again, I apologize in advance. This is a little bit lengthy. This is a statement from Superintendent Stella Kemp. And I'll read it in its entirety. We're doing this tonight, obviously, as part of our partnership with the school district in the interests of good quality public information. Dear San Bruno community, beginning my third month as superintendent of the San Bruno Park School District, I must pause long enough to send out a big thank you to our city for the many ways in which you have demonstrated support for me and our San Bruno youth. I'm a firm believer that schools and community are one unit, and partnerships with all sectors of the community are essential to helping children reach their maximum potential. I am very impressed with the past two years of concerted effort by the district to better connect with city and county leadership, service clubs, the Chamber of Commerce, and the business and corporate community. The results have been awards and grants, donations, programs, projects, and partnerships that are flourishing. It is important for the community to know about the support our students and teachers are receiving from these partners. We tell the story in our triennial reports to the community, but I want to capture it all here in one big thank you message. Business partnerships in public schools enable students to expand their horizons, to see and experience the world, the workplace, and what opportunities lie ahead for them. These partnerships make schools stronger. Examples of solid relationships we enjoy with the business community are evident with the San Bruno Chamber of Commerce bringing businesses and ideas to the district for collaboration and fundraising. Walmart sponsored the district's Run to College program, helped fund Community Day, and also joined Hands on the Bay Area to enhance the exterior of our schools. San Bruno Lions Club provides free vision screening to our students. San Bruno Rotary helps with Parkside Sister City Exchange with students in Narita, Japan through, through, in Narita, Japan. Through the San Bruno Education Foundation, the San Bruno Community Foundation has funded a music initiative, making music instruction available to all public school students in San Bruno, including at Cappuccino High School. Also through the Education Foundation, the Welsh Family Foundation is funding numerous programs such as music in preschool and district school field trips. The Danford Foundation has been generous with support for STEM and math. Recology San Bruno volunteers to teach students about protecting the environment. The city partners with our schools on library and recreation services and invites our talented students to perform at city meetings and events. The San Mateo County Board of Supervisors provided funding for PE at several of our schools. Peninsula Healthcare District has funded a student health center, and the San Bruno Education Foundation, the fundraising arm of the district, provides ongoing support of programs and projects. The presence of YouTube, Google, in our city has given a significant boost to our school community with conversations ongoing about future endeavors. For example, a grant from YouTube is helping to expand STEM education. Volunteers from Google work with students at our schools to teach Code World and coding clubs. Google hosted an all-day computer science first training for sixth graders at Parkside. YouTube hosted an all-day visit at their headquarters for 100 of our students. Google provided 3,000 pairs of safety glasses for our students and staff to watch the eclipse. YouTube is hosting the Second Annual Teachers for Cash, or Teachers Class, Cash for Class Event at Nueve, sponsored by the San Bruno Chamber of Commerce, honoring our teachers. Google volunteered through Hands on Bay Area to create mural art and refurbish gardens at several campuses before opening of school. Google provided a grant to the city for Community Day, which is enjoyed by San Bruno families, and YouTube is helping to fund with the San Bruno Community Foundation a pedestrian safety initiative that will see installations of flashing beacons and crosswalks at two of our schools. Google's Public Affairs Director for Northern California volunteers on the board of the Directors for the San Bruno Chamber of Commerce. The dots strongly connect the corporate, business, and philanthropic community with the San Bruno Park School District. We will continue to strengthen these partnerships and develop new ones. As the district embarks on a new chapter in its legacy to create schools for tomorrow, providing 21st century learning for San Bruno youth, we will need you and our community partners more than ever. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, thank you again for all you do for the children of San Bruno. No doubt about it, San Bruno is the city with a heart. One can see it manifest in these partnerships inside as well as outside of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie, and Stella, and Nancy. Our third item to announce is recology. Kirsten has an announcement to make.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's Recology's intention in this next year to definitely, and moving forward, to kind of visit the council and give you updates on how things are going. So I thought it was imperative that I bring to you tonight our new Waste Zero Specialist, Samantha Carr. She's going to give you a brief little update on who she is, and then she's going to talk about our Coats for Kids program.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I am here this evening to introduce myself. My name is Samantha Carr, and I am the new Waste Zero Specialist at Recology San Bruno. A little bit about myself, I attended the University of Oregon in Eugene, Oregon, and I graduated with a degree in environmental science. Over these past two years, I participated in AmeriCorps program called Civic Spark, and I was placed with the City of Richmond City Manager's Office. During my fellowship, I worked on many of the city's zero-waste initiatives. A couple of highlights, I designed and implemented a project to add recycling receptacles in their parks and along public right-of-ways. I implemented organics recycling at some of the city's community centers, and I assisted with one of the local high schools in increasing their recycling participation and starting organics program. My role as the Waste Zero Specialist is to assist residents and businesses in reducing waste, increasing recycling, and helping businesses to navigate the state-mandated recycling laws. We are also excited to remind everyone that our 21st Annual Coats for Kids drive is currently underway. We have our coat collection bins out in the community, and we are pleased to announce that YouTube has also joined us this year and is conducting their own internal collection as well. Mark your calendars. The coat giveaway day is on Wednesday, November 15th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., and it will be at the American Legion, located at 757 San Mateo Avenue. We hope you can all stop by and be a part of this heartwarming experience. Thank you all, and I look forward to meeting each of you personally. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Samantha. Marty, you had something about Halloween?
Oh, be, I'm sorry, Marty. Before that, do you want to tell people what Coats for Kids is and where they can leave their coats off?
Yeah, so there's various locations, and we can email a flyer feed like that has all the locations. What Coats for Kids is, is we collect used, gently-used, or new coats, and then we give them away to kids. And these coats that we collect, they can be from child to adult size. The goal is to get kids as many coats as possible, or to get as many kids' coats as possible. And then we can send out a flyer with all the locations. I don't remember them, all of them, off the top of my head, but we can definitely follow up with that.
Okay, thank you. I know for sure one is at City Hall, and I believe one is at the library, Tim, and one is at the city library, so for sure we have them there. And I think, I thought, is one here? It's the senior center?
Yeah, they're definitely around the community. They're at La Patipaleen, they're at Berkshire Hathaway, and if residents are watching, and they do have coats, but they don't have a means to get them to one of those locations, they can certainly call Recology Customer Service, and we can have somebody pick them up.
Oh, that's excellent. And I believe the last day to collect is the 31st?
31st, but since our distribution isn't until the 15th, we'll certainly take coats up until the night before, just so we have enough to give away.
Thank you. And may I have one more?
You may.
Thank you. Our Assistant City Clerk, Vicki Hachey's daughter, actually started this 21 years ago.
Yep.
She saw a child who needed a coat, and she had outgrown one, and she encouraged her mom to start a program to do this, and they've been doing it. They did it all by themselves for a long time, and then the city got involved, and then Recology got involved. So it's truly a homegrown, see a need and fulfill it kind of thing. So we're very proud of Rose.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Thank you.
My understanding is you'll accept a check also, so you can purchase a coat if need be?
We do, we do. There's always sizes that aren't always available, and we don't want any child to go home without one. So if we find a child that there isn't a coat for them, we will take their name and phone number, and we will go purchase a coat on their behalf.
Great. And make sure the flyer's given to the city clerk so we can get it on the city website.
Absolutely.
Okay. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Marty?
Happy Halloween at Tanfran Mall. All right? So from 3:30 to 4:30, there's the Halloween Goodie Bag and Raffle Ticket, uh, raffle ticket, which they'll draw. Here it says 4:30 in front of Old Navy. Children up to 10 in costume are eligible. If you have any questions, please call 616-7180. Should be a lot of fun. Hope to see you there.
Always is, a lot of fun for kids. I have a couple of announcements here. The city of San Bruno is helping to sponsor donations. Our hearts go out to those affected by the recent North Bay fires. In conjunction with the San Bruno Park School District, the city of San Bruno is collecting donations for those affected to show our support to our neighbors in the North Bay. Items will be collected through November 8th, 2017, and will be delivered to the Redwood Empire Food Bank or the Santa Rosa Salvation Army. There's a number of recommended items here, and I think there's some flyers there at the, at the desk. Bins are located at the following city facilities: San Bruno City Hall in the lobby, San Bruno Library, Rec Center, and the Cable Office. And monetary donations can be made online or directly, and there's a couple of, Redwood Credit Union and United Way Wine Country here, so we know what it's like to experience disaster in a flash in San Bruno. This is increased by factors of 1,000, so anything we can do as a city to help support their efforts, I'd like to do that. And the city sponsoring this with the school district, so it's very important. The other announcement, and Connie mentioned it briefly, is the San Bruno Chamber of Commerce Second Annual Teachers Cash for Class Reception in partnership with YouTube, the Welsh Family Partnership, San Bruno Rotary, and the San Bruno Education Foundation. It's Monday, November the 6th, right here, at 4:30 p.m., 4:30 to 6:30 at Nueve Restaurant, Mexican Bar and Grill, at 851 Cherry in the Bay Hill Shopping Center. And San Bruno businesses and the community at large celebrate San Bruno Park School District teachers with this annual event, providing them with donated bags of school supplies and donated $100 cash gifts to purchase additional supplies to enhance their teaching and student learning. It's just a really, really nice event, so I encourage everyone to attend. And I think we have one more announcement. Connie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This will be shorter than my previous statement. On behalf of the school district, Mayor Ruane, members of the city council, and members of the San Bruno community, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. The purpose of my comments are to announce that after 14 years of service as your city manager, I have recently informed the city council of my intent to retire in early 2018. It has truly been my privilege to serve this community as the capstone of my career in public service that now spans several decades. Over that time, it has been my special honor to have served in the capacity of city manager in three communities under the council-manager form of government. Under this special system of governance, it is the city manager's responsibility to manage the municipal corporation and its broad range of operations, to implement policy created by the city council, and to assure, to assure that the community's big-picture needs and interests are properly addressed and assured. Working together as a team over the last 14 years, three examples of our accomplishment and the lasting results of the staff and the city council partnerships stand out for me as representing special points of pride. First, your vision to transform the former Navy site across from Tanfran to a modern, vibrant, mixed-use community with an emphasis on the creation of affordable housing was realized over a period of several years, during which staff devoted its considerable professional and technical expertise, working tirelessly with the developer, to address the myriad of detail and decisions to make that vision a reality. Today, the Crossing San Bruno is home to over 1,000 individuals and families, over 20% of whom receive the benefit of affordable rents secured into the long term. That development set the stage for our work more recently to develop, and now, over the next many years, to implement our Transit Corridorist Plan to revitalize our downtown and the central business area of our community. Secondly, there is perhaps no better example of the success of our collaborative work effort than what happened during and since the tragic 2010 gas pipeline explosion that catapulted San Bruno into the national spotlight, even as we worked hard just to handle the community's immediate needs in the wake of disaster. Building upon the city council's direction that the city right the wrong that had occurred in San Bruno, and that we make sure that what happened here doesn't ever happen again anywhere, staff's work effort assured the establishment of a trust fund in the amount of $50 million to make sure that this city was not also financially damaged by the explosion, and that we could put the town back together in the best possible way. And we assured that restitution was provided, again, to right the wrong by negotiating a $70 million settlement with PG&E, an unprecedented action, to make sure that we have the ability to move this community forward in ways that we may have only previously been able to dream about. Lastly, tonight, we have the opportunity to proceed and to take another action, another important action, in a long series of initiatives directed by the city council to assure a strong and reliable utility infrastructure system. By considering the bond financing program that we bring to you tonight, you have the ability to develop a funding program that will allow us to proceed with the implementation, the construction of many important water and sanitary sewer projects that will do just what you intend. Make sure that this community's underground infrastructure is not out of sight and out of mind, but that it is revitalized and made to assure the community's future into the long term with these essential services. I thank you for your trust, your confidence, and your support. As I transition to retirement over the next several months and beyond, I know that I will remain very proud of my connection with this very special community, and acutely interested in the positive progress that I know San Bruno is poised to attain over the coming years. I look forward with great anticipation to your progress. Thank you. Thank you.
I have a lot of things to say, but I'm going to save them for another time, as you can imagine.
The long goodbyes are going to start now?
Yeah. We really, really appreciate all of your, all of your efforts, and I think the council knows more than any, any other group, RANITY, or any other person, how much you, you put your heart and soul into this city, so thank you very much. Presentations, there aren't any presentations this evening. Review of the agenda, I'd like to move, there's no objection, Item 11, which is Report of our Cultural and Arts Commission to write after public hearings. That's all right. Item number six, approval of the minutes of the special and regular city council meetings of October 10, 2017. Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Seeing none to be approved, is submitted. Item number seven is consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion, no separate discussion unless requested. Anything on consent?
Through the chair?
Irene.
I'd like to pull 7E, please.
7E, E is in, or D is in Delta?
No, E.
E, oh, E, I'm sorry. E is in Echo. Okay. Anything else?
If not, move to approve the remainder of the consent.
Second.
Motion, second, on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 7E is accept a request from Culture and Arts Commission Chair to declare vacancy due to the passing of a member and direct the city clerk to post the vacancy in accordance with state law and initiate the process for the appointment of a new member. Irene?
Thank you. I just wanted to recognize again Carolyn Livingood, who was the member that passed away, her efforts with the Culture and Arts Commission. She was a founding member, and she worked very hard through these years to make it a viable commission. It's an honor to be on this commission. There's a lot of exciting things that can happen with it. They have their own budget, and they have a lot of ideas and a variety of things. It's not just paintings in a frame. They sponsor the Shakespeare in the Park, they do the movies after, the Friday afternoon movies, they do artwork in the library, there's a lot of things that they do. So if you're interested at all in this and making San Bruno a little more beautiful place to be, please do apply. Thank you. And with that, I'll move to approve?
Second.
Motion, second, to approve item 7E. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Before we do public hearings, there aren't any this evening, I want to thank the garden club for the flowers they always provide for children. Public hearings, there aren't any this evening. We'll get right to item number 11, the annual report to the Culture and Arts Commission.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I thought you were going to steal my thunder there with everything you said about the, what we do. I'm Pamela Gamble, and the purpose of the Culture and Arts Commission, if you want to go to the next slide, please carry. We are, they're, we are responsible for promoting artistic development of the community, and really, can you hear me? Okay, thank you. And preserving and also honoring San Bruno's diverse cultural heritage that we have. And our goals are to include acquiring and maintaining public art as well as sponsoring programs and events that enhance the quality of life for all of our San Bruno residents. Can you go to the next one? Okay. Here are some of the accomplishments that I would like to review for 2016, 17. We hosted the International Children's Arts Exhibit from San Bruno Sister City, Narita, Japan. Hosted Movies in the Park, Shakespeare in the Park that just happened, just passed, the past Sunday. Released an RFP and received applications for Signal Art Project. We also resumed our library art gallery program. We invite every member of the community to come to the library in San Bruno to see it. And we also sponsored the Children's Arts Project in conjunction with the Posey Parade and Community Day in the park. And here, we'll just go through some of the, what that looks like, if you would like to. Okay. Uh-oh, we're doing it at the same time. Okay, so this is some of the artwork for the exhibit with our Sister City in Narita. And then our Movies in Park, in the park, this was our selection. We did put it up on the website and had input from the community to see what movies they would like to see. And then we showed Romeo and Juliet this past Sunday. Hopefully, some of you were able to go and attend it. It was a really good showing. And then here are some of the artwork from our library art gallery program. And then our sponsorship of the Children's Art Project in conjunction with the Posey Parade. This is what our balance is for this upcoming year. And then here are some of our goals. What are we going to do now that we have money? Here are some of our goals for the upcoming year. We will continue the gallery exhibit program at the library. We will host our Sister City again for 2018, and also the Children's Exhibit. We will continue with the Movies in the Park, so look out for the new selections for the upcoming year. We will do another Shakespeare in the Park to continue that tradition. And one of the hefty goals that we have for this year are the six traffic signal art projects, including Caltrans permitting as necessary. That's a process that we've learned that you've got to go through, but we're hoping to complete that in the upcoming year. Our sponsorship of the Children's Art Project in conjunction with the Posey Parade, that is such a San Bruno tradition that we would like to share. And then to continue, just to develop our commissions, we meet every month, and so we will, you know, come up with ideas. The community is always welcome. These are meetings that are always open to the public as well. So this, as everybody knows, was a jewel of the San Bruno community, Carolyn Livingwood, who was a founding member of the Culture and Arts Committee, and she was very instrumental in this community. We, at San Bruno, we lost a really respected and loved member. It was a loss for her family, it was a loss for San Bruno, and also a loss for our Culture and Arts community. She really gave a lot and really cared about San Bruno as a community. So... So, we are really going to miss her so much, so I think that's it that I have as far as my presentation, so if that's it, I...
We might have some questions.
Okay.
Questions?
Do you have any?
Anyone? Ken?
I was reading that in the minutes, the utility box artists, you went out to an RFP to various artists, and have you selected an artist in the coming year, what can we expect?
Okay, so that is a project that we are, the RFP has just gone out again, we did not feel that we received enough of, from our community, from the art community, we just didn't get enough artists to reply, so we wanted to make sure that we were making it available to everybody, getting that communication out there. So, we wanted to kind of get more of, more people involved in the process, if you will, to submit artwork. So, we had a small showing in our first RFP that went out, so we did it again. So, if we have any artist here or watching and has a vision for one of the boxes that I think there's, you can go to the website that we have to ensure that you kind of read through if you're an artist, you know, we knew, young, old, everybody has a little artist in them, so we are happy to review your work at one of our meetings.
Great, thank you.
So, that's still ongoing.
Thank you, and I want to, Marty, you have something?
No, it's great. I went, oh, sure. So, I went to Shakespeare in the Park, and it was really great, and just wanted to thank you for all the work that you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Irene?
Have you reached out to the Skyline College Art Community and the Cappuccino artists, you know, the student artists might be a venue to look at?
Yes, I think we have sent information regarding the RFP, is that what you're asking?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, we made that available to them. We've tried to do some projects with Skyline, and that's kind of in discussions and ongoing, but yes, I'll definitely make sure if they have not already received it, that they do get the offer to, you know, submit their artwork to our committee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And for the public, wonderful report, and you guys are doing great work, all of our commission boards and committees are volunteer, they put in literally thousands of hours on their own during the day, evenings, to make this city great, and it's the lifeblood of what happens, it's all sort of, almost all behind the scenes, but you guys do a wonderful job, and we can't say enough about you. So, thank you very much, and thanks to commission for us, please.
Thank you so much, we are definitely trying to make our community in San Bruno stronger.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine is public comment on items not on this agenda, it is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum for, to staff for investigation and action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council under public comment? Yeah, just tell us your name and your street, please.
Sandra Perez Vargas, Mastic Avenue. I too wanted to remember Carolyn Livinggood today, I met her when she was already very ill, and as ill as she was, she would still come out on Sundays, clean up San Mateo Avenue, and go through the task of letting us know what could be improved. And she really wanted San Mateo Avenue to be a clean destination for people, she wanted new magazine racks, she's been bringing that up for years, those magazine racks are still there, broken down, people can cut themselves on them, the garbage cans are falling apart. I think we can honor her in more than words, but in action, and I would love to partner with anybody who would like to really take on San Mateo Avenue. I've gone down there, I surveyed many of the merchants and what they would like to see from the city, and I know Marty is good friends with her Rico, we helped garden for her when she couldn't, and maybe focus more on the areas she also cared about, she saw the decline of the heart of San Bruno, it was, she didn't have to get involved with us, she was set aside from that, but she felt for us for what we're living through, not being able to get on our driveways, garbage everywhere, and no consistent follow-up. So, I want to remember Carolyn by giving something back to her.
All right, thank you. Anyone else under public comment? Okay, right into conduct of business, item 10A is receive oral report and review the status of local emergency related to the truck collision at the senior center and continuing declaration of local emergency. Connie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have a short, but I hope positive report tonight on a number of accomplishments leading to our ultimate ability to reopen the senior center with a fully functional main assembly room and stage. During the period of time since my last report, we have completed the construction of a partition wall just on the other side of this sliding door that expands the space available in the main room for programs and activities, and we have in fact been able to expand the attendance at the Thursday night bingo program operated by the Nutrition Site Council and to relocate and expand some of the programming that has continued up here at the senior center. The construction contractor who was, gave us the best price and the best timeline to build the temporary wall, has now been selected to complete the construction of, or reconstruction of the stage area that was damaged by the truck accident, and we are currently completing negotiations with that contractor towards the start of construction, towards the beginning to middle of November. That construction is anticipated to take approximately two months. We're also pleased to report that the replacement of the entire floor surface in this main room will be part of the project that is funded by our insurance as well as the ADA components of the project that are required under the building code. So, we look forward to only a couple more reports over the next two months as we move very quickly to full reconstruction of the center and restoration of all of the important programs our seniors rely on. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Through the chair.
Ken?
Connie, there's been a few people that have complained about, we've received letters about why is it taking so long and everything, and it's not just, and you can elaborate on this, it's not just a vehicle hitting the, hitting the, hitting the building, there was significant structural damage and significant damage mainly that stage area. So, there was time where I had to hire an engineer and design professionals and things to do, to do documents, you know, for the bidding and the contract.
Sure, so even under the provisions of the emergency declaration, there are a number of actions that need to be taken, and there have been a few items that don't necessarily meet the eye that have had to be addressed. And the first is hazardous materials cleanup, that was the result of the accident and the leakage of some petroleum products in the dirt, in the, in the stage area. We have, we have plans for the building, the original construction drawings for the senior center are available to us, that was a big benefit, but there are additional, there was significant, as you indicate, structural damage to the, to the, that portion of the building, and it has required a detailed and comprehensive review of the structural design, not only to determine how to put it back together, but also to meet current building codes. Again, as we indicated then, there's been a little bit of time and effort involved in determining what components of the project would be included under our insurance settlement, and we're very pleased, as I indicated, to be able to say that because of some damage that was necessitated after, to the floor area in front of the stage that was caused as a result of the post-accident investigations, we are able to, look forward to being able to complete the entire floor, resurfacing of the entire floor, which I think will give a fresh new look to the senior center and really brighten up the space so that it will be even better than it was before it was damaged.
Okay. 10B, adopt resolutions of the City of San Bruno, City Council and the San Bruno Public Financing Authority Board of Directors to, number one, approving the issuance and sale of water revenue bonds by the San Bruno Public Financing Authority in the maximum principal amount of $13,500,000 to provide financing for improvements to the water system, and approving related documents and actions, and also approving the issuance and sale of wastewater revenue bonds by the San Bruno Public Financing Authority in the maximum principal amount of $27,500,000 to provide financing for improvements to the wastewater systems and approving related documents and actions.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're pleased to be back with our financing team tonight, represented by Jim Fabian at the far end of the staff table here, who will give a short staff report. We have a number of the financing team members here in the audience tonight, and both they, as well as Mr. O'Leary and myself, will be available to answer your questions at the conclusion of the report.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of City Council, and citizens of San Bruno. Jim Fabian with Field and Rollup and Associate City's Municipal Advisor. We do have a short presentation that I will walk through this evening, and at any point, if you have any questions, please let us know, and we can address those at that particular slide. So, again, we were in front of you on October the 10th for a study session where we laid out where the city has been in looking at the needs of the wastewater system and the water system, and how in the past, on May 23, 2017, the City Council adopted a five-year rate increase for both the wastewater and water fund, which increased the rates by approximately 5% per year, laid out a plan for the required investment in both the wastewater and water system, identified the need to allow for debt financing to help minimize the year-to-year impact on the rate payers. Additionally, we discussed at the study session the adoption of the capital improvement program by the City Council on June 27th. As part of that CIP program, there was an identification of $62 million of improvements for the water, wastewater system, and approximately $45 million for the water system. These projects were anticipated to be constructed over the next five years, and as part of that CIP adoption, there was identified the need to use bond proceeds to help fund those As I mentioned, on October the 10th, we had an extensive discussion about the past actions of the council and the need now to move forward with the debt issuance process for the water, wastewater and water bonds. We were directed to come back in front of you tonight to deliberate on the required actions to move forward with the bond financing, and that's what we're here to discuss tonight. So, this evening, we'd like to again review the capital projects to be debt financed, both on the wastewater and water system, look at the preferred or recommended financing structure, look at the debt service requirements that would be the result from the borrowing, look at the legal and financing documents and walk through those with you, and then look at our, our schedule going forward. On this slide, we have put together the list of the wastewater projects to be financed through the issuance of the bonds. As identified on the slide, you can see that these are preliminary cost estimates, subject to the final bid and award. We have identified the projects with the asterisk to show which are mandated by the Baykeeper Consent Decree, and we have provided you with the status of the design for each of the identified projects. And you can see that these projects identify and add up to $26.7 million, which is the net proceeds from the bond issue. As was discussed earlier with the adoption of the rate study, these projects were identified in the prior adopted rate study. I should also point out that these are bond finance projects, but the system improvements that, there will also be a lot of improvements that are funded through pay-as-you-go type of expenditures as well. On the water side of things, we do not have the consent decree here, but we have identified these high priority projects to be funded through the issuance of the water bonds. As you can see, we have added the project status to show you where they are with the design of each one of these projects as well. And again, these were identified in the adopted rate study, and the total cost is approximately $12.6 million. Again, there'll be additional pay-go projects that will be funded on the water system on a pay-as-you-go basis. So, in looking at the debt structure, as we talked about in the study session, we do have existing debt on the wastewater side. This actually goes back to 2002, when the city did a bond issue to finance improvements, those bonds were refunded in 2013, your finance team helped with that refinancing, and these bonds would be on the same lean level or priority as those bonds. The structure is set up where there will be no debt service reserve fund required, the coverage, the minimum coverage requirement will be 1.25x, they'll have fixed rate of interest, they'll be a 30-year term, and we'll have level debt service, and they're secured by the pledge of net revenues of the wastewater system. So, all the revenues of the wastewater system minus the cost of operations and maintenance leaves net revenues, and those are pledged to the repayment of the bonds. Based upon current bond market conditions, we would estimate that we would have approximate debt service cost of $1.5 million a year, the anticipated true interest cost on the bonds would be 3.6%. As I mentioned, they would be 30-year bonds, so the final maturity would be July 1, 2047, and the closing date is estimated to be on December the 6th. These are estimated, estimates right now, until the bonds are actually sold, we're working with our best estimate of what the actual interest rate will be. I wanted to note, too, that the adopted rate study had assumed that the debt that would be issued would be approximately 5.5%, so we're well within the parameters that were set out in the adopted rate study. Turning to the coverage for the wastewater fund, what we do is we project out the next five years based upon the total revenues that were identified in the rate study, looking at the total expenses, calculating the net coverage or, of net revenues available, looking at the 2013 debt, the bonds that exist, and then the debt service on the anticipated bonds. And you can see there that we have very strong coverage, and factoring in your existing loans that you have with the state revolving fund, you have approximately three times coverage. And why that's important to you is that puts you in a position to go to the rating agency and get the strongest possible underlying credit rating. By showing the fiscal strength of the wastewater fund, we think we're going to be able to get into the double-A rating category, which provides lower rates for the next 30 years to the residents of San Bruno. On the next slide, this is a discussion of the debt structure for the water fund. There's no existing debt on the water side, so we're creating a new debt structure for the water system, very similar in all aspects to the wastewater fund. No debt service reserve fund, a coverage covenant of 1.25x, it would be a fixed rate borrowing as well, a 30-year term, and it would be secured by the pledge of the net revenues of the, of the water system. In, in looking at the rate study, there was identified the potential need for a new borrowing in 2023, 2023, to provide the needed funding of additional projects over the 10-year period. What we've looked at today is borrowing requirements for the next five years. Again, this is our estimate of what that bond would look like based upon current interest rates, our costs would be about $710,000 a year. Again, we're going to be very similar in credit quality to the wastewater fund in the double-A category, we think we're going to be right around 3.6%. The final maturity would be on July 1, 2047, and the closing date would be on December the 1st. final maturity would be on July 1, 2047, and the closing date would be on December the 6th. And again, in the rate study, it was estimated that the cost of borrowing for identified projects would be about 5.5%. So we're well within that threshold. Now, again, projecting forward on the water side of things, again, using the rate study that was adopted, the rate increases that have been approved, we calculate what the revenues would be for the next five years. We also look at our expenses in the system for the next five years and calculate what our net revenues would be, and then use our existing projections of debt service to calculate our coverage. You can see on the water side, we have a little bit higher coverage, but again, this is building to provide you with the future flexibility to do a borrowing in 2023 to continue the capital improvement program in the water system. One of the things we talked about on the 10th was interest rate environment that we're working in in October, and the good interest rate environment continues. Rates are at or near historic lows from the standpoint of tax-exempt municipal debt. On the far left, you can see where rates were back in 2014. They trended downward in 2016. We had a ramp-up with the election results and the change in market sentiment back in late 2016, but things have been very consistent so far in 2017, and put the city in a good position to lock in rates for the next 30 years. The next slide is just a graph to be able to show you. On the far left, year 1 to the far right, year 30, where rates have been historically. And the thing that I'd like to point out to you is, on the far right, you can see that 95% of the time, rates have been higher. So only about 5% of the time, rates have been lower. So for a 30-year borrowing, it's a very good time to try to lock in interest rates right now. Yes, sir?
So that's for the 30-year. Is it pretty much the same for a 10-year? Would be a lower interest rate by about a point?
You would have a lower interest rate if you did a 10-year term. The reason we choose to do a 30-year term is because of the useful life of the assets. The assets which are being financed through the bond issue have a typical useful life of about 50 years. So you want to spread the cost of repayment of those assets over not only the current residents of San Bruno, but future residents and user of the system, so that you have, that's typically why you use a 30-year term versus a 10-year term, where everything would be loaded up front and more on the backs of existing residents and not future residents and users. So looking at where interest rates are right now, as we talked about, we are at a historically low interest rate environment. There is a lot of speculation that the Fed will raise rates in December. If we went forward now, we would be in front of that rate increase that is set for the December. It would allow us to capture that low rate and lock it in for 30 years. It also puts us in a position where we're doing better than what was anticipated in the rate study. That was modeled to have a 5.5% interest rate. We're going to be well below 4%, which is very good. If rates increased by about a quarter of a percent, that would equate to approximately $45,000 on average per year. And if you looked at that over a 30-year period, it's a little over 1.2 million. If rates were to increase by a half a point or 50 basis points, that would be $95,000 a year, or about $2.7 million. So you can see that a change in interest rates does have a pretty significant impact on the ratepayers and residents of San Bruno. Wanted to walk through what's in front of you this evening in terms of our documents from a legal and financial perspective. We do have two resolutions, one for the City Council and one for the authority, that would approve all the documents in front of you. The first one is the...
There's actually four, two, two, one.
Oh, yeah, right. As Jim mentioned to me, there's four resolutions, one for the water system and one for the wastewater side. We do have an indenture. The indenture is the document between the city and the trustee, which in this case is Union Bank. We have an installment sale agreement between the authority and the city, where we lease the projects, and we agree to pay back through the installment sale agreement on a semi-annual basis, the installment payments that are then used to pay bondholders. We have probably the most important document in front of you tonight is the preliminary official statement. This is the document that the underwriter will use to market the bonds and provide information to potential bond investors. This document has been deemed final for purposes of meeting the requirements of Rule 15(c)(12) of the Securities Act of 1934. It has been prepared with input from myself, other consultants, and city staff, and Jones Hall is acting as the disclosure counsel and preparing the preliminary official statement. We also have in front of you a continuing disclosure agreement, and this provides the bond investors the annual updated information that you would provide to tell them about both the water and the wastewater system. Then we have a bond purchase contract. This is the contract between the city and Prager and Company as your underwriter, where they agree, you agree to sell your bonds to them, and they agree to buy them from you and then resell them to the public. So tonight's action, we have the adoption of the resolutions that I mentioned. Part of that includes the approval of the finance team members. It also delegates to the city manager the authority to sign the bond purchase agreement under certain parameters that were identified in the resolution. It allows us to move forward with securing an underlying credit rating from S&amp;P. We are scheduled to meet with Standard and Poor's on October the 26th. Connie, Jim, and Jimmy, and myself will be there. We've prepared a very detailed presentation to walk through with them the financial strength of both the wastewater and water fund and the city at large, also talking about the policy framework of the city. And we think, as I mentioned before, we'll be able to maintain that AA rating category that we have on the existing 2013 bonds. We're scheduled to move forward with the sale of the bonds on November the 9th, subject to change in market conditions, and then close right around December the 6th. And that's when the proceeds would be available for the city to then start building the projects. Lastly, as I mentioned at the study session, Jones Hall is the city's bond counsel and disclosure counsel. My firm, Fieldman Rollup and Associates, acts as your municipal advisor. The bond underwriters, Prager and Company. The trustee is Union Bank, and then, as I mentioned, the rating agency is Standard and Poor's. And we're ready to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for our consultant, Marty?
So I have a combination of comments and questions, and I'm going to apologize now because they're quite lengthy. So indulge me for a bit. Let's clarify with the mayor. I think I could wait till the end would be probably more appropriate, because I don't think I'm going to get the answers in the next few minutes. So I think I'll wait till the end after public comment and to give all this whole lengthy commentary.
Do you want to ask him first?
The part that, I guess this is for the city manager, and this is for the public, for them to understand. I meet with the city manager every week, every Monday, whenever possible, unless there's a holiday. I've served on the subcommittee, the utility subcommittee with Councilwoman O'Connell. So here's our background. We met with staff and the rate study consultant in March. After two revisions of rate increase choices, we recommended using the debt as detailed in the rate study, on the rate study at that time, with the data at that time. And we chose and recommended to go with the five-year, 5% rate increases in water and sewer to minimize the impact to our ratepayers, knowing that we're going to have to issue debt. So despite being on the subcommittee for the utility subcommittee, I didn't learn of the debt issuance until October 6th. So I'm already uncomfortable going into this, being on the subcommittee and not knowing much in advance what was going on. In fact, I was in shock on October 10th, when we had the subcommittee, or the study session on this debt issuance. And I expressed it in the hour-long, untelevised, poorly advertised, but legal notification to the public of issuing $39.3 million in bonds costing $64 million over 30 years, to be approved in two weeks. So my first feeling was, well, why now? How did this happen? I was very frustrated with, I felt, the lack of transparency in this process. A month ago, the council chose to select a consultant to help hire our city clerk, and that cost around $30,000. That was brought to the council to decide which firm to choose. I have nothing against the finance team, the underwriters, absolutely nothing, but I don't know how they were chosen. Shouldn't the choice been brought back to the council? How much money is everybody getting out of this? Is it in the hundreds of thousands? Is it in millions? Can somebody answer that question now?
So I'm happy to respond to all of the issues that you've raised. With all due respect to the surprise that you're indicating that you experienced, we did a little review of the records today, and there were actually 12 publicly noticed meetings, beginning in February of 2017, over the course of which, we discussed the need and the intent to issue debt to address the costs associated with the utility infrastructure, and to comport with the rate structure that the city council proposed, I'm sorry, that the utility subcommittee proposed to the city council in March, and that was ultimately approved by the city council in May of this year. The specifics of the intent to proceed, and the fact that staff was, in fact, moving to carry out the city council's direction, was discussed with the utility subcommittee at your meeting on October 23rd, I'm sorry, August 23rd of this year. So with all due respect, although we did not bring you the details of the financing until they had been adequately prepared and could be thoughtfully and comprehensively represented to the city council on October 10th, I believe that the city council has had adequate opportunity to know and to direct the city staff's work to bring you the proposals that we're bringing you tonight for approval. Regarding the selection of the consulting team that is working on this financing, we discussed at the October 10th study session that the consulting team is the very same one that we used in 2013, and that at that time was selected, again, by staff. And I'll come back to discuss a little bit about how we typically select and bring forward consultants to the city council. The consulting team was selected by staff for their expertise, and frankly, for their phenomenal success in serving the city's interests with the bond refinancing in 2013. That refinancing saved ratepayers of the utility system, in this case, the wastewater enterprise, approximately $80,000 annually by taking advantage of lowered interest rates over the remaining life of the debt that was originally issued in 2002. Regarding the normal process for selecting consultants, the process that we use involves a city staff review of experts in the field of whatever it is that we're seeking expertise in, review of credentials, analysis of the needs of the city, and ultimately, presentation to the city council. As you saw in Mr. Fabian's report this evening, one of the actions that we are being asked to take tonight is the approval of the financing team. I've already explained why I believe and am recommending that this is the right team. The work that they have produced should speak for itself in representing the city council and the city's overall interests to secure funding in order to make sure that our utility capital improvement program is successfully and timely carried out. The financing, I want to comment specifically on your statements regarding the selection of the consultant to conduct the city clerk recruitment. That actually did occur in a little bit of a different manner than any other consultant selection that I can think of, particularly in the recent several years that my memory extends. The city council has determined by previous votes over the several months earlier in 2017, that it was your intent to appoint the city clerk at the city council level. And so we brought you, we conducted a solicitation. We brought you the responses to that solicitation and asked for your guidance about the consultant that you specifically would be working with in order to conduct the city clerk recruitment. Again, that process differs a little bit from the normal procedure that we use, whereby we would solicit proposals, evaluate those proposals, and select a consultant that the staff recommends, and bring forward that single consultant as a staff recommendation for your endorsement. Still different is the way that financings typically occur. This team is not paid until and unless the bond issuance is approved by the city council, and therefore, their work has been done to this point at risk of your approval. And you are being asked tonight to do, as you always do, which is to approve the financing team as well as the issuance of the debt in fulfillment of the city council's policy goals and objectives.
Were you going to answer how much they're making?
The answer to the question, I'm sorry. The total amount of the compensation to the team that is a cost of the debt issuance and has been factored into essentially the costs of the costs of the delivery of the financing is, in aggregate, $650,000, or 1.7% of the total cost, or the total amount of the financing. I'm sorry, and that's the consolidated total amount for the two separate bond issuances, one for the water enterprise and one for the wastewater enterprise.
Okay. So I can agree to disagree of the notification of the specifics of this debt issuance. We didn't... We didn't, we had these, we knew we were going to pay with debt for this program. It's in, it's in the tables. Those tables don't add up to what we're talking about tonight. So I have an issue with that, but we didn't, as a full council, we did not get word of this until two weeks ago. So I'm expressing how I had issues with that, or continue to have issues, issues with that. I understand the underwriters need to make money. The issue I have with how we're proceeding here is we have one option. One big 64 million dollar payoff over 30 years or nothing. I have a hard time with that. I think, I think we should always be given at least two choices when it comes down to anything because do this or do nothing. And we know we can't do nothing. We have to, we have, we have to pay this debt. We, we agree to that. We understand that. And now I'm going to go into the tables of the, the, the data that is in need of revision. As discussed with the city manager yesterday, I made a very clear, table 9A has some assumptions in growth that are very conservative. Twenty, 25 units, 25 units. 25 apartments, 25 single-family homes per year for five years. And in fact, it goes all the way for a total of 10 years. So the, the study that we're, we're determining to get this debt is 10 years of only 25 units per year. Right here. So we already know that the Plaza Apartments have 83 units. They're building them right now. First National Bank got an update today. Their preliminary plans show 60 units. Lee Buffet, former Lee's Buffet, people know that place, 23 units. Skyline College, 70 units. Mills Park, 329 units. Okay, so the tables that, what we received from the, from the consultant who told us how much to raise the rates or how much debt we needed to get doesn't have these numbers in the analysis. So instead of 125 over the next five years, we're looking at 574. Now that's very significant because we just raised the capacity charges for water and sewer from around $5,000 to $12,000 per unit. So if we add those units that are coming onboard in the next probably three years, four years, we're looking between 3.1 million to 6.3 million dollars in additional revenue, one-time revenue into the water and to the sewer. So these tables aren't accurate. They're a little way too conservative. These tables also do not, I already said that, that the numbers don't add up. When I, when I looked at adding what the debt proceeds for water and sewer, they don't add up to what we're issuing. So yes, last night I asked for the consultant to revise these tables because we need to know what, what we really need. I'm also concerned about the construction schedule of the projects that are in design or in construction. I'm looking more like, well, maybe we might have to delay those that we can in the water and we pay as we go. Because when it comes down to it, we're all going to be paying for it. This interest is 20-something million? Is that what it is? I'm sorry. Millions of dollars in interest. So I think we need to reexamine all of this instead of rushing forward. Our financial problems with our water and sewer have taken many, many years to develop. And rushing to decide in two weeks with data that's not correct. And we're forgetting another thing. We have a new election. We have an election coming up in a couple of weeks. We're going to dump this whole amount of debt on the new council and waiting a little bit longer is, is not going to cost that much money. So I'll just tell you right now, I'm voting no on this. And I'm, I'm, we could wait a little longer.
Wait a little longer, pay many millions of dollars more. You won't pay less.
The data's not, the data's not accurate, Jim. It's not accurate. I, I would like to hear a response.
Any comment from the consultant at all regarding what Marty said?
Sure, well, I can give a couple of comments. Yeah, yeah. Mr. O'Leary would like to see the table 9A, the documents that we have, we're not readily finding it. So I'll comment about a couple of the other.
5%, 5%, 25, 25, 25, 25, 25, 25, 25, 25.
Again, with due respect to the council members' interest to use pay-as-you-go financing, that was discussed as an option both during the analysis of the rates back in February, March, and May, where the city council, I believe, was informed and understood that absent the debt financing that pay-as-you-go would likely, would, not likely, would absolutely impact the city's ability to deliver projects in a timely manner consistent with, and I'll just say what staff has consistently understood, the city council's urgency and highest priority imperative to move forward with our capital improvement program so that we can make sure that our water and wastewater utility systems are rehabilitated and that we are no longer subject to the frequent breaks and repairs regulatory agency actions and lawsuits that we have previously experienced as a result of our previous deferred maintenance program. So it has been staff's clear understanding. We would certainly appreciate if the city council believes that, that urgency, we would appreciate knowing if it's the city council's interest to, to reverse that previous direction. Pay-as-you-go simply will not allow the delivery schedule that our, that the city council has previously directed and that we're prepared to deliver. You're correct. It took us many years to get here. And I believe that's where the city council's urgency, based on your previous many discussions have indicated, you don't want us spending that many years to correct the situation and to make sure that our utility system is stable and reliable. Regarding the numbers in the report, I'm going to let, I think I'm going to let Mr. O'Leary respond to the 25 units per year. But I want to respond first to the topic that we discussed last night, which is in the water enterprise, the table that you were able to add up, a total of $19 million, 19-point-something million dollars, and your question about why we were issuing $12 million in debt as opposed to the $19 million that was shown in the consultant's rate analysis report. First of all, the rate analysis report is, was, is done with a certain intent in mind, and that is to identify rate requirements and options, a rate amount, a rate increase amount, options for the city council's consideration. That information is then the base for the financing team's evaluation of the information with a different perspective related to financing. What is the best amount, timing, and structure for a debt issuance in order to meet the council's objectives? The difference between the $12 million that we're proposing be financed tonight in the water enterprise and the $19 million that you added up comes from a table that showed a 10-year rate horizon beginning in 16, 17 through, I guess, 26, 27. Again, as Mr. Fabian indicated earlier, we're, we are talking about the five-year current rate planning period and the adopted, the, the current five-year rate period. And if you add those numbers up, they do indeed come to the $12 million that we're talking about tonight. So as Mr. Fabian indicated, there is, the rate study anticipates an additional issuance of debt in a, in and around the 2023 time period. And that would be the difference based on the current rate analysis. And again, I would remind you that based on our current practice of a multi-year rate program, we will next be doing another comprehensive rate analysis in 2021, 22. And the city council will have the opportunity at that time to consider rates, to consider whether you want to prepare for another debt issuance or not with, with new information about the current status of projects and costs associated with the projects. I believe Jim can respond to the 25 units per year issue.
The, thank you for, for sharing the table. I'm, I, for some reason, not, not finding it here. But the table that you referred to comes out of the water and sewer rate study that again was undertaken by Bartle Wells, really beginning in very early 2017. And in considering the rate adjustment, there was a factor that could be included. And I think there was actually quite a bit of discussion at the subcommittee level because the consultant indicated that some city councils, especially in relatively no-growth areas, show no growth when they're calculating. And it was the recommendation that not factoring or not trying to determine exactly what a future development would be and when it would be and when it would come online, that the recommendation was to show a 25-meter increase over each of the 10 years. This was reviewed with the subcommittee in great detail. And this was the direction that the subcommittee gave was to include the 25 increase year to year. So I think a statement that, that table is incorrect is a misreading of the table. I, I think it is precisely your direction to include it in that direction, in, in that manner.
Can I, can I, can we have a discussion here then on that? If you don't mind, excuse my interruption. This is a model. This was a, this, this, it was good data at the time. A model just going to get, get an idea of where things are, where things are going to be in the future. Before you take on this debt, I think you go back and you make sure your data's in, kind of makes more sense. So as a model, it was fine to say 25%, 25 is, is, it's a conservative number. But when it comes down to what's really needed, I think it's, it's, it would be important to look at what's coming in. Instead, we don't need that big of a debt because we're, we have at least 3 million coming in of capacity charges, not including the, the water service fees and the water consumption fees or consumption that's going to be generating revenue from these additional units. So you're correct. We did look at this. It was a model. It was a conservative model. But as we go into issuing debt, you want to reexamine it before you say yes. And that's what I'm asking for. We're not doing that here. Isn't it close to 3 million with, with, with these additional units of a capacity fees that are going to be coming in, in water and sewer? 474 units. Let's do, yes, no?
Through the chair.
Irene.
Well.
May, may, I think you, since I was the other half of this subcommittee.
Irene was on the subcommittee also.
Issuing debt is very scary. It's like looking at your house and you're going to take out a mortgage. And you are looking at how much you have to put down and how much your salary is going to be. And I know all of us at some time or another have experienced that heart-wrenching thing where you're going to sign the paper because some months you only have $36.54, and I, that's a real number, left in the checkbook after you pay your mortgage. But part of your expectations and part of the bank's expectations is you will earn more money and it won't be so hard the next time and the next time. Okay? So that just kind of gets you in the frame of how all this is. We did discuss the 25. To, to, it's always better to think that you're going to make less than you are. And then when you get more, it's fabulous. You put that toward other projects. You look in the future and say, okay, since we had this extra money that we did not spell out, then we put that and don't do the, the debt service in 2023. Or we accelerate how the projects we're going to do. Or to say we are for sure going to get $3 million is on the other side. We may not get all those units. Developers may pull out. The economy may go down. All those things might happen. It's just as, as chancy to, it's more chance to say for sure they will all be built than it is to say conservatively, we will for sure have 25 every year for the next five years. So that's where the, that's what I heard when I went to all those meetings. I'm sure that's my understanding of what staff heard. And in general, that's how this city operates when we do our budgeting. We, we budget higher than we think and than we think we're going to earn. I'm sorry, is that how we're doing it? Or backwards? So we think we're going to earn less than we hope we will, and then we have a cushion. So that's what this is about. If we get more money than we expect, fabulous. We'll put it toward our, our other projects. We have an endless supply of projects. And in 20 years, the system that we did 20 years ago is going to be 40 years old. And we'll have more projects. It's an unending stream of projects that we're going to be doing. It's just like your car and your house. You paint the house, you put a new roof on, you fix the plumbing. And guess what? In 10, five years, you need a new fence and you, on and on and on. So the, the city is in the same type of situation. So I understand Marty's concerns. I don't quite agree with him about the surprise about the debt service. I, I don't understand why, that, that, there is no urgency about it as far as how this all lays out. We get criticized, we started this in March. We get criticized for going too fast and now we're going to criticize for going too slow. So I, I don't see any fault on any of the staff part. I think what they did was work hard and give us the best information they possibly could. They went with a financial team that has proven to have saved us money, all of us money, in our rates in the past and will be doing so in the future. So I'll stop there and give it to the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I could just add a, a, a comment. I think it's important for the council not to confuse I think it's important for the council not to confuse two separate issues. The 5 percent, the 5 percent growth that, you know, could be characterized as an error that needs correction, again, as I pointed out, this was the direction of the subcommittee after a lot of discussion, that this was a fair representation of the growth. And it is true that it is based on a model, but that model resulted in a rate study that the council has approved. So it is not just a theoretical rates, a theoretical formula. It is a rate study and that has resulted in certain rates, and I, among others, are going to be representing to Standard and Poor's on Friday the veracity of that rate study. And I think it's important that, not be implied that there is a substantial or incorrect error in it. I would say that, from my belief, that it is entirely an accurate formula that the committee and the council approved. I think the discussion of the rate study, and then there's a separate discussion of capacity charges, and there's, and amount, and I think that the city council at the direction, with the help of the subcommittee, did a lot of work on the capacity charge issue and recognition that there had been no increase or adjustment since 2001 that we were really behind. And so we moved the capacity charge on future development from dead last among our comparators to the mid-range. So I think, I mean, full credit to the council, and I mean, I think that's a substantial movement. I think to characterize that at any given year or at any given time we are going to generate $3 million in revenue is simply not a true statement, that we, and I think as one of your colleagues said as recently as the last meeting, hope is not a plan. That we might hope that we get this money, but it is certainly not a plan. And when we go to S and P next week, S and P does not consider capacity charges as revenue that they are going to be considering in debt coverage. So they are looking at our ongoing rates. So I think it's important not to mix those two. I think that, just the last characterization that I would like to hopefully clarify a little bit is, again, the characterization that the numbers, as it relates to debt financing, are incorrect. And I think if one reads the documents with some care, you'll see that that's really not the case. And I would point out that there is one change, if, again, if you, and correction that we have included in the rate analysis and the bonding analysis. The rate study, as it was approved and the way it was projected, there was a little over $1 million in projects related to the South San Francisco, San Bruno Treatment Plant. And we have gotten updated information, and the 1718 expenditure for San Francisco, rather than being about 1.1 million, is actually going to be 5.2 million. And it is on that basis that we have increased the amount of the debt issuance to cover that specific additional increase in the treatment plant. Other than that, within a small margin of change. In fact, the amount of the debt does come out of the rate study and does come out of the capital improvement budget. So it is, I mean, again, to state that there's an error and that it does not add up is simply misreading that particular, those particular documents, and, thank you.
With all due respect, Jim, if it's been changed, it wasn't accurate. The tables are now...
San Francisco has advised us that the 1718 expenditure is 5.2 million rather than what we knew at the beginning of the year of 1.1. That is correct.
Right. So it's fine. I sense how this is going, and I'm just hoping that you see that I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is it was very conservative modeling early on. And at that point, we, I was, I guess, thinking, unfortunately, at that point, like, well, whenever it came to that debt issuance, we would be able to talk about it instead of have, and we did, but we only have two weeks to figure it out. So for the modeling, it was fine, conservative, but now we have additional information that changes how our revenue streams are going to be. So that's where I'll leave it at, and we can agree on that part possibly.
Rico?
Good, Chair. And I want to hear from the public, but I won't give myself credit for the hope is not a plan. That was Joe Long, who gave me those words as a younger man. On capacity charges, one thing I will say is I believe in being more conservative. I do not believe if we had budgeted for the TOT tax of the hotel near Jack's, we would have been budgeting for things we could, we would not have come to fruition, and we would not have actually be here. The 326 units that are proposed or discussion, that discussion has been happening before I even got on the council about something happening. So I don't know that we can, I would feel uncomfortable saying it's in the bank, that that should be knowing that we're going to get those, because we have seen projects, the one that's going on near San Bruno Cable, that we had a developer and the developer died, then the economy went bad, then that didn't happen, and now it is happening. So when it comes to balancing budgets and people's money, we have an obligation, and so I am more on the conservative side, because if you do find that you have monies from capacity charges that the subcommittee brought forward and the council's approved, then there is nothing in my mind that says you don't have to do the issuance in 223, and there is nothing that says, can we look at the rates? Could they go down to 4%? There's nothing to say they can't go down. There is something that says they should not and cannot go up without going back out to 218. They are locked in for, right now, for five years, because I know a concern of mine would be, is there was somewhere about, well, it may not affect. Well, I want more assurance that it's, it is what it is. The majority of the council approved the years at the percent, and that's what it is, locked in, and they can go down, but they cannot go up without going back out and going through the entire 218 process. Is that correct? Okay. So on being conservative, I think that was wise to analyze that, but I don't know that we should assume that we're going to get it. And to me, dealing, if it was my bank account, I'll gamble. But I have a hard time doing that to the community, to assume we're going to get it, until we got it in the bank or it's in the pipeline. I don't want to, I don't want to count for that.
Right. I have the same type of comments. I was very satisfied with the presentation a couple of weeks ago. I thought it was a good deal for the city. We're saving some money, and we did it at the, with the help of the people that saved us a lot of money before. So you have a snapshot in time, you know, budgeting 25 units, you're talking about 300-something units in all community real, you're not going to see those for years, years. So that money's not going to be there for years. But if you do, for some reason, we have another 400 and some on units coming on board real quick, there's nothing to say we can't look at rates. We confirm that. You can always, you can always reduce them. So, you know, I'd rather be conservative also. I think it's a good deal for the city. I really want the city to take advantage of its interest rate climate right now. We're going to save an awful lot of money overall because of this. And the projects we're going to do, you saw them on the board tonight, I mean, there's a slew of projects that have to be done to get us in some kind of shape here for our infrastructure. It's huge. And so I support this. Ken?
Four more meetings to go, and this is one of the most important ones, I think, that I'll be a part of. And of all those 20 years that I've been sitting here and making decisions, I don't even have a real speck of, you know, expertise that this finance team has. And Jim O'Leary has provided great information, great forecasting, great budgeting for the city for many years, and has proven it. We sit in a study session, you get presented with this stuff that is, at least for me, a few feet over my head. And I asked the question, why these guys? Why these guys? You know, why, why are we, you know, why did not, why didn't we select, you know, the finance team? The answer was, the question, the question was answered. This is the team that saved us, and we've worked well with them, and they have a proven track record. The only question I didn't ask at the study session is enlighten me on why we haven't gotten into debt previously? Why haven't we made this more of a practice, you know, so that we can put that pile of money, you know, in one, in one month's time and start, you know, that's real shovel-ready. When you've got a project ready and you've got the cash ready, you can go out and start paying people to do the work. We're collecting rates with no guarantee that we're going to get these projects done. And as time goes by, we all know that the prices go up. This is, to me, and not, again, not being a financer, not being really good at even balancing my own checkbook, this is a no-brainer. The time is right, the rates are starting to inch up, so that, you know, you can't afford to even lose $20,000 a month, you know, in a, you know, in a rate increase. So I'm convinced with this, this is what this council, the majority of this council has been doing for the last 20 years to benefit the city for the next 100 years. I'm voting yes.
Okay. Anything else?
I do want to hear from the public.
Anybody from the public?
Please, I didn't mean it that way.
Just tell us your name and your street, please.
Russ Steins, Reed Avenue. A couple of things. One is, I've been to a few council meetings, and I think over the last 10 or 15 years, we've, I've watched us raise rates and raise rates and raise rates, always saying that we were going to rebuild our infrastructure, we're going to get this fixed so kids didn't have to live in sewage on the wet, on the east side. And, you know, basically, I know we've done some projects, I know we need to do many more projects, but my question really is, is, you know, at least three of you have been on that council since 2001 or so, for the last 17 or 20 years. And why are we here, and why all of a sudden, when you're all leaving, are you going to take us and put us $40 million in debt when you don't even want to hire a city clerk because you want to let the new council work with them, but yet you want to make the decision for everybody else to be put in $40 million in debt instead of allowing the new council to work this out with some different lenders? And the next question I got is, how many, I know we've worked with these lenders supposedly, and they're great guys, how many lenders did you guys go after? How many guys, how many people did you say, we want to borrow 40 million bucks? What kind of rate can you give us? What can you do for us? How much is it going to be? That's what I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra Perez-Vargas, I want to echo that. I'm not comfortable with people heading out the door making decisions for our future. You're going to be gone, Mayor, Ken is going to be gone, you announced tonight you're going to be gone. How easy is it for you on the way out? I would love to see, say, Marco, Michael Salazar, or Laura, and Rico as mayor, making those decisions for the rest of us. You're out the door. Thank you.
Just a reminder, we up here pay the same rates that you do.
I understand that.
Right, right. Okay.
I understand that. That's why it shocks you that you make such simple decisions for the rest of us.
Ryan Marsney, Keynes Avenue. According to actuary tables, I more than likely will still be alive in 30 years and paying off the debt that you are accruing for us tonight. Several of you, according to actuary tables, will not be alive in 30 years. And yet you're going to saddle us with this. It can't wait a few more months, but we have to trust the wonderful management team that only has Cable $9 million in debt and has tables that really don't seem to add up. No problem, we can just trust you. No, thank you. That's why we have elections. We're having elections in a few weeks. Please let the new council decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any action by the council?
Through the chair.
Rico?
There were a couple of questions asked. So did we, did staff go out to look at different finance teams? Or was there some, something done other than just say, it's right there? That was one of the questions.
So we did not look for a new finance team with this financing?
Second question was, what is the detriment to having wait, which the new council isn't sworn in until the 12th, and they may not be able to meet until later that month or in the 218 for official actions? What repercussion could that have?
So at this point, we're approximately two and a half months until the first business meeting of the new city council. During that time period, as the news is reporting, there is a moderate to high probability, and again, no, none of us can with precise accuracy predict, but there is a high probability that the, you know, interest rates will increase over that period of time, and I would say that that is probably the biggest risk that is associated with waiting that period of time at this point.
And construction costs?
Well, thank you. Construction costs are always increasing, and while we will continue to deliver projects based on our existing schedule with the resources that are available to us, that's a significant concern as well. And the last important issue is, as the city council is aware, there is a deadline associated with our consent decree based on our settlement agreement with the baykeepers and the enforcement action by the regional board associated with the wastewater enterprise, that those deadlines are coming up quickly, and delay in those projects, you saw the list of them tonight with the number of starred projects in the wastewater enterprise that are subject to the consent decree, delay in delivering those projects will most likely subject the city to the potential of additional enforcement action and litigation by the baykeepers.
And if the city took no debt and did a pay-as-you-go, what would be the repercussions to the city, which is one, not meeting the requirements?
There's the possibility of not meeting the requirements under consent decree, there's the possibility of our financing becoming more expensive or being, you know, becoming not cost-effective. Again, the comments that I've made previously.
When the city went in to do its first debt, back in '02, '03, for my time, but the reason they decided to do that then was, if you recall, or somebody?
I mean, the very first financing the city did was for the police facility in 2000, but the first wastewater was in 2002. And again, like this particular time, and I think there were $9 million, my recollection, it was about $9 million in projects that the city council determined were of great importance to move forward. There were a number of projects in various locations, as I believe there were a total of six projects, and there was immediacy, there was a strong recommendation from the council to move forward as quickly as those projects, and again, the methodology of doing that is to issue debt. I would respond a little further to just a question, and this just goes back to the benefit... There...
And this just goes back to the, the benefit, perceived benefits, if there are any of pay-as-you-go. And obviously, the, you know, one of the benefits might be financing costs as you would avoid with your mortgage if you paid cash for a house and put off living in it for 20 years until you, you know, saved up that, that amount of money. But I did want to go back to, to the rate study because the subcommittee understood, I believe, and in the time I've been associated with city over 20 years, it has been the direction of the council that the rates that are approved every three or five years or annually are to, number one, be as low as possible for the benefit of the, of the residents and to, and in addition to that, there is an interest in, over a long-term, smoothing increases as much as possible and not having spikes and, and great variations in, in rates. I, I did a, I, I explored if the council decided to undertake the capital project program that the city council has approved, and to do it purely on a pay-as-you-go basis. On the water side, in order, in fact, to do these projects, in 1718, it would have taken a 35% rate increase. On, on the water side, if you were going to do the projects that the council has, has approved, it would take a 20% increase in 1718, an additional 10% next year in 1819. The, the council direction has always been to smooth the rate increases as much as possible and consistently, the means to address that is through debt financing. And that debt financing, I mean, again, back to a question by council member Rico Medina about, well, why, why haven't we, we done projects? Why haven't we financed years ago? Well, I think the reality is that you only, you only finance when you need to. I mean, I think, I think it's safe to say that the schedules for projects has changed year to year in recent years. That has not caused an immediate need to do it. Because of, in part, because of the consent decree, we have an absolute deadline. It cannot be put off, and these projects are going to get done. This money is going to get spent, and the option to doing the rates as the council approved were the, the rate adjustments that I described without debt.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add one more quick comment, and this is a response to a question that actually hasn't been asked yet in, in the forum here this evening, but was asked previously, and that was, could staff provide a short narrative about each of the projects that is proposed to be funded by the debt financing? And I just wanted to let you know that our staff has prepared that information, spent the time to develop a short paragraph on each of those projects that we will distribute to the city council, to any other interested member of the community, and that we will post on our website so that that information is available for anybody who's interested.
Thank you, and I, I did have that on my notes, Avenue's 1-1, that was on the slide presentation. We have the staff reports and what have you, but that would be something that would be appreciated. So, when we had that, the debt that we just spoke about, we went out, where were any negatives? When we look back on it and it got paid off, you're right, and we refinanced and saved $80,000, what were the negatives when we look back in time? Because obviously, that's when you can really tell whether, whether it worked or it didn't. And maybe where were the positives, to be fair, so I'm not a half-empty glass over here?
I'm not sure I can be objective. I guess I was part of, you know, undertaking, you know, the council's direction. I honestly can, I mean, negatives, I, I'm not sure that there were any negatives. I believe, and, you know, I'm not a public works person, so I'm not sure I can best describe. But, but, but again, there were six projects adding up to about $9 million that were priority projects for the council. And I, as I recall, some of them had to do with flooding in some, some neighborhoods and area, and, and those $9 million of projects were done and completed, and the system was improved. And, you know, I mean, the interest rate, as I recall, was probably double what we're talking about today, so I don't know if that's a negative, but that was the time in which it was done. I think it was a very good rate in that environment, but I, I honestly can't think of any, of any negatives to, to, to share.
That's it for now, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Marty?
Just want to clarify. Pay-as-you-go, what I, what I'm thinking that if we didn't issue as much debt that get us through the first couple of years, through 18 and 19, water and sewer, water 11.1, sewer 12.2, that would get us through the consent decree and allow other options to be reviewed. We're going to be, have a better, we'll be down the road more to see how the development's coming. That money will be in the bank if it winds up being so. So, what, why couldn't we do 20 million and let the council, the next council decide? I'll leave it at that. Why can't we just take care of the first three years of what's planned? What's in the tables? I keep on going to the tables, since that's the last data that I am able to use. Adding up the next three years is 23.3 million in water and sewer, and debt proceeds that we needed in the rate study. So, why can't we do that?
So, you can do that. The, your staff and the financing team is not recommending that you do that for a variety of reasons. The first is that, based on our analysis, this is the most cost-effective way to utilize debt to assure the delivery of projects over the five-year rate stu, the rate, the, the approved rate program period of time. As I'm sure you were aware, are aware, the rate study itself anticipated multiple issuance of debt, I believe, three or four times in the five-year period. You incur issuance costs in each, at each, each time you issue debt. We talked about those costs earlier. They're not, if you can do it once instead of four times, you, you save money. It, this debt issuance was evaluated and determined to be the most timely and appropriate to meet the schedule of the projects. In other words, the work is needed in the early years of the rate program. And as Mr. O'Leary indicated, that's the reason that he was able to calculate the 35% rate increase that would be required if you used a pay-as-you-go, or of course, you can delay the delivery of the projects. So, there are options. Your, your, your decision tonight could be to send the financing team back to the drawing board. Staff is not recommending that for, for the reasons that we've outlined, not to mention what we previously discussed in terms of the, the time value of money. In this case, the opportunity to take advantage of historically low interest rates.
Okay.
One last question.
All right.
What would be the other alternative? Instead of the 60 or 40, 40 million, 30-year, you must have came up with some other option that you eventually said, "Ah, we're not going to do that, we're going to go for this." What was that?
Well, I think, I, I guess I would say we, just as, just as you're describing, there are options. We looked at a variety of options. I mean, I mean, we could issue debt every year. I mean, we, we could only do one year's worth of financing. So, so that is,
Let me rephrase the question.
That's an option.
What, what was the second-best option? Not all the options, what's the second-best option?
The second-best option is the option we presented to you.
Do nothing or do this. What's the other option?
All, I mean, I mean, again, we can do it, we, we could do two years. I mean, we, there, there are, there are, we could break it up into any, any increment that the council, you know, would direct us, but, but there's, I mean, this is,
Can I just interrupt?
Sure.
For, for the simp, for the layperson, this was at the study session. You came up with a figure of $27 million. You showed the amount of projects that will be done, that will be started and completed within the next three years that equaled that debt amount. To get less spent, you're going to do less. To get more, you know, would be too much. We had to be realistic. We turned to, you know, to Public Works Director, "Will you do these projects in three years?" And he said, "Yes." I mean, what other option is there? To do less work with the rates that we're collecting? Meaning dragging them out more? I mean, this is the, correct me if I'm wrong, and I mean, again, I'm trying to make this as simple for the public as possible. This is about using the rate structure that we have adopted to the, to the optimum and the most effective use for the money at a time where money is at its cheapest. And yet you can speculate all you want, that you don't know what's going to happen tomorrow or, or a month from now. Trend is it's going up. My money is on it's going up, and why wait?
If I may, just to speculate, the only other option is to do less work, which is not an option at all. We have an opportunity here to fund a lot of projects. Just look at that list, and we can get it done, and we can get it done in an economic way. It's, it's the right thing to do, so.
And the other problem aside from, it, it did, did take care of the $9 million projects before, we're under a decree, we're under a timeline. That's the problem. And yes, we can minimize it, we can go out for a few years, five years, but, but in the end, the rate is good. Doesn't mean we can't lower things, but also, we have to meet deadlines, obligations, and legal requirements. And I know what the repercussion is, because I've had to sit through those getting on to the council. And those are things we don't want to go back to. And it's going to make it worse for the rate payer, because it already has.
Do you have something briefly, Mr.?
I do, I do. Just real quickly, you know, for 17 years, we didn't raise hooking up for new people coming to this town for water and sewer. And we might find ourselves in a much better place than we are today. So, I guess, what I guess what I'm trying to say is, for us to wait until the new city council comes in and allow them to look at different options, and a few different other financing options, and a few different other lenders, is not the end of the world. So, I ask you guys, you know, from my perspective, you guys are going to be, Jim, you know, all kindness to you. In a, in a month or so from now, you're going to be sitting here at home watching this, and you're going to sit there and you're going to say, "Okay, our water and sewer rates have went up 10 times, 12 times in the last 15 years. And what are we doing? We need to, we need to do these projects. What's the best rate we can get for the people here? Because I don't want my children to be in debt, and I don't want to have to pay for this 30 years down the line without getting the absolute best deal possible, and making sure that we cover every base and not rushing into a $40 million loan that we're going to pay $22 million on, because you don't want to take the time out because you want to pass it tonight." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion or action by the council?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, suggest a structure for dealing. You have four resolutions.
Right.
Two for the city council, water and wastewater, and then two for the public financing authority, also water and wastewater. So, if someone is introducing the resolutions, you can do the two city council ones first. Vicki can call the role on, on both the city council. And then you can do the public financing authority, two resolutions, and she can call the role on that.
Okay, very good. Someone like to introduce the resolutions based on the city council?
I'll introduce the resolution for the city council on resolution one, the issuance, I guess.
Water.
So, probably it's just easiest to refer to it as the city council water resolution, and then the city council wastewater resolution, and we'll know which one you mean.
One at a time?
Yes.
Okay. I'll introduce the resolution, city council water resolution.
Vice Mayor Ibarra?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
No.
Councilmember Rico Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
Introduce the resolution for city council issuance of wastewater bonds.
Vice Mayor Ibarra?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
No.
Councilmember Rico Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
So, now we'll switch to the public financing authority, and we need a director to introduce the water resolution.
All right, let's do it again. I will introduce the resolution for San Bruno Public Financing Authority authorizing issuance of the bonds. Water, water revenue bonds.
Director Ibarra?
Aye.
Director Marty Medina?
No.
Director Rico Medina?
Aye.
Director O'Connell?
Aye.
Director Ruane?
Aye.
Finally, introduce the resolution, San Bruno Public Financing Authority issuance of wastewater revenue bonds.
Director Ibarra?
Aye.
Director Marty Medina?
No.
Director Rico Medina?
Aye.
Director O'Connell?
Aye.
Director Ruane?
Aye. Item 10C is adopt a resolution repealing the existing parking restriction on the east side of the 700 block of Hensley Avenue and establishing a new parking restriction on the east side of the 700 block of Hensley Avenue between 9:00 AM and 11:00 AM on the first and third Monday of every month for street sweeping.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Earlier this year, staff received a request from the resident that lived along the 700 block of Hensley Avenue who inquired whether the parking restrictions on the east side of the block can be removed to create more parking spaces. And given that there is a shortage of parking spaces, the resident was interested in creating additional parking spaces for the neighborhood. The 700 block of Hensley Avenue is located between San Bruno and Canes Avenue and parallel El Camino Real. On the east side of the block are single-family homes. On the west side are mostly commercial, which consist of Shell Gas Station, Melody Toyota, Toyota and Midas Auto Repair. Currently, parking is restricted along the east side of the road from 7:00 AM in the morning to 6:00 PM at night, except for Sundays and holidays. The west side allows public parking except for the hours between 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM for street sweeping on the first and third Tuesdays of each month. Staff evaluated the resident's request and brought the item to TSBC last month for discussion. The evaluation consists of assessing the roadway width and determining whether, why parking restrictions existed only along the east side of the block. Staff determined that the roadway width is 28 feet, similar to the other nearby residential streets in the neighborhood, and those streets allow parking on both sides. And historical records were searched and reviewed those available records and agreements with the city and the Melody Toyota and other businesses provided little information regarding parking requirements. Staff also contacted adjacent businesses to determine whether they would oppose the removal of the parking restrictions. The Shell Gas Station and St. Bruno Church did not provide any feedback. Melody Toyota and Midas were in favor of removing the parking restrictions. At the TSBC meeting, staff presented the removal of the parking restriction and, and let them know that they will create 20 additional parking spaces. Residents spoke in favor of removing the restrictions, and not one resident opposed. TSBC voted 4 to 0 to accept the staff recommendations of removing the parking restrictions. And the only time the parking will be restricted, it's between 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM on the first and third Monday of each month for street sweeping. and third Monday of each month for street sweeping. As for the fiscal impact, the cost of removing and replacing the signs is approximately about, you know, $500, and there's sufficient funding and operating budget to install these signs. So that concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anything for Jimmy, staff, or action? If you introduce? I'd like to introduce the, hold on a second. Resolution.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibarra?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. Item 10D, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of agreement with the City of Daly City and the California Water Service Company for preparation of a groundwater sustainability plan for the southwest side groundwater basin.
Thanks. Good evening again. Underneath the city of San Bruno is an aquifer known as the southwest side basin that provides the city with a valuable source of water supply. The city has historically provided approximately 50% of the water supply from the basin, and the remaining balance is supplies purchased from the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission. Therefore, the protection and management of the groundwater basin is important, since the city relies on it as a source of potable supply for our community. Our city has been a leader in groundwater management in the southwest side basin, and some of the accomplishments to date include installation of monitoring wells to aid in the detection of potential seawater intrusion from the San Francisco Bay, development of the groundwater management plan, development of the shallow groundwater study, and the current development of the groundwater sustainability agency and the groundwater sustainability plan. The requirement for the formation of the groundwater sustainability agency and the plan is part of the Groundwater Sustainability Act, signed by the California Governor Jerry Brown in September of 2014. And the guidelines for the plan requirements and groundwater basins priorities were completed by the California Department of Water Resources. The basins were prioritized, very low, low, medium, and high, using data for population, population growth, public supply wells, groundwater used, irrigated acres, and total wells. The high priority and medium priority basins are required to prepare their plans immediately and send it over to their Department of Water Resources. And low and very low priority basins are not required to complete the plan. The entire west side basin is considered to be a low priority basin, and is not required to complete the plan at this time. However, both the north, which is being prepared by the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, and the south, which we're located in, are proceeding as voluntary efforts, and eventually a requirement from DWR that all basins have to have the plans in place. And the advantage of having a sustainability plan would empower local agencies to utilize a number of new management tools to achieve their goals, such as requiring registration of groundwater wells, mandating annual extraction reports from individual wells, and imposing limits on extractions. The plan will also include more stringent monitoring of groundwater elevations, water quality, and help guide water supply decisions, in particular, on the volume of water that should be pumped. The purpose of tonight's action is to recommend execution of the MOA with Daly City and Cal Water. This agreement requires that our city, Daly City and Cal Water, prepare a single groundwater sustainability plan for the southwest side basin, and the agreement also defines the roles and responsibilities of the partner agencies, and include all three agencies to provide, a staff member to develop the core team that will be responsible for coordinating and carrying out the activities to complete the preparation of the plan. SFPUC is completing their own plan for the north part of the basin, and the two plans are anticipated to be merged together after it's completed. There are no fiscal impact associated with this execution of the MOA, and previously, the parties agreed to a three-way cost sharing of about $39,000 each, which is, has already been signed. So this concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Through the chair. Question that actually was raised by the city manager when we were speaking last evening, which was, is this agreement necessary since work is already, you know, the project is underway and work has begun, so is this, is there a need for this actually to be signed, or are we all just good with each other?
We're good with each other, but I think it's better that we sign this agreement too as well. But I heard from staff that there is a little bit of a delay in this project because of staff availability to work on this, so there's, we need to have this agreement signed so that people, staff are committed to completing this plan, from other agencies as well.
City manager?
So I'm looking at the director's notes, and the staff apparently indicated also that the previous agreement is for the cost sharing to finance the plan. It's not a, it's not an agreement that situates the responsibilities of the partner agencies and provides the benefits that the director has just eliminated in terms of not only defining the roles and the responsibilities, but making sure that we're coordinated with the SFPUC, and eventually providing the template for responsible management of the groundwater basin that we share with others.
So it is necessary and needed, and would make you happy?
Correct.
Okay, both of you. Okay, good.
So...
I'll go ahead, if it's all right, and my colleagues, introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Rico Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibarra?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
We already did number 11, the annual report of the Culture and Arts Commission. Twelve is comments from council members. Marty, you have a, but we, before we get into that, I just want to ask Mark Zaffrono to briefly discuss something that I've gotten some comments from the public regarding the marijuana thing that we have. What is preventing us from doing a permanent ban on this? And do we have to, if we do, do we have to do it now, or can we wait? I mean, maybe you could just give us a little update on that, because there's some...
Sure. Very briefly, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, you've adopted a moratorium on all commercial marijuana activities in the city of San Bruno, and that moratorium is in effect until October 25th of 2018. So that law has the same force and effect as any permanent ordinance that you might decide to adopt either now or at a later date. But at this point, nothing prevents you from deciding to adopt a permanent ordinance, and a permanent ordinance would not expire unless it were reversed or repealed by the city council. So as you know, adopting the moratorium required four votes. Adopting or appealing a permanent ordinance requires only three votes. So it's really at the pleasure of the council as to whether they would like to direct me to bring forward now a permanent ordinance regarding commercial marijuana activities in the city, or to do so at a later date, either after the first of the year, or, yeah, after the first of the year, or some date after that, when we know what the regulations from the state of California are going to be. So it's really the city council's discretion. A permanent ordinance would require two readings, so we'd need a business meeting to introduce the ordinance, and then a meeting to adopt the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. I've been asked by the public, a number of members of the public, to see if there's any rush to get this done, but we can do it after the state actually sets their, sets their laws, right?
You can, that's correct.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you. Marty, you have, want us to consider an application to the San Mateo County Transportation Authority to fund establishment of a proposed shuttle service in San Bruno?
Right. So I was approached by Jeffrey Tong, a member of our Bicycle Pedestrian Committee, about this upcoming grant that's available due, at some time, it doesn't have an exact date, due in December. And Jeffrey knows more, way more than I do. I wondered if it was appropriate for him to...
As long as it's brief.
As long as it's brief, Jeffrey.
Jeffrey.
San Bruno Bike and Pedestrian Committee passed a bike and pedestrian master plan in 2016, but it really doesn't address the hills. It's rather deficient. I was told by Joel Slavitt that a shuttle call for project is going to be beginning December the 15th, but Bike and Pedestrian Committee meets every two months, and your committee probably needs to make a decision within the next month, too, because Joel Slavitt says that you need to prepare for this. Once December 15th comes up, you probably have enough time to just fill out the applications. I'd ask you to support this shuttle call for project, because we need to at least look at opportunities to deal with the traffic congestion and parking issues in downtown. And I proposed a route, a quick route. Option one, basically Marty asked me to do three options. Option one is just to go up San Bruno Avenue to the Sweeney Ridge Trail and the San Andreas Trail. Option two was just do three loops, so that you at least serve the adjacent neighborhoods going up San Bruno Avenue. Option three was to do a citywide shuttle, but that, that was too long, more than one hour. So I proposed a route for you to look at, and hopefully, the staff can evaluate the logistics of that, as well as the cost. Again, Joel Slavitt mentioned that it depends upon which vendor you use, and that would determine what the cost is. At this point in time, I don't have that information, and he recommends that staff look into that a little bit further. I'd like to just leave this with...
Why don't you give it to the city clerk?
And then you can pass that to the council.
So I think part of the concept was that you would work with the BPAC to assist with writing the grant, and to minimize the, minimize the cost to the city by not utilizing staff very much, and I volunteered to work with Jeffrey to be able to write a grant. I do have a little bit of experience doing so, and being able to minimize costs. And the bare-bones concept would be, you get more points, and Ken could probably help me out on this a little bit, if he recalls, about serving, they call it transit-dependent neighborhoods. So originating in the avenues, coming up through downtown to go to BART, to go to Cal Train, loop up to Bay Hill, drop off the U2 people that are working on Saturdays and Sundays, head up to Bay Hill, I'm sorry, Bay Hill, and then drop them off at the top of the trailhead, and loop back down. That's the bare bones route that I'm most interested in, that I think has the highest, the lowest cost, and the most likelihood of meeting the criteria that is being set up by the Transportation Authority.
Correct. Although they have not initiated the start of call for projects, the SAM Trans representative showed me what the application was for the last call of projects, and each section has maybe about 15 to 25 points. The proposal that I'm sending, that I'm giving you tonight touches on all the lower, I don't want to use the word poverty-stricken, but, yeah, those areas that allow greater number of points, and it just touches them so that it, as well as service all the adjacent neighborhoods to San Bruno Avenue going all the way up. The greatest difficulty for the people living at the top of the hills, Portola Highlands and College Heights, is that there's no opportunity to come down to mass transit unless they have a car. And with this shuttle, I think, I don't know how many, which is the optimal number of people per bus, but if you just have 30 people per bus times six or something per hour, you could talk about close to 200 people, or 200 cars that you could eliminate off the road. But again, this is just a pilot project to look at a weekend opportunity, and there was a study that says that a lot of people really like to bike long distances, and since we have a 17-mile trail all the way down to Woodside, San Mateo Parks has a shuttle from Ridwood City Transit Center to Edgewood and Wunderlich, this proposal could close that loop and give tourists, or even Bay Area residents, an opportunity to take a short vacation through San Bruno. And it could be an opportunity for the city to look at making San Bruno an eco-tourist destination in the future. But again, having this pilot project could give you that data to make that decision in a couple of years.
All right.
Question?
Thank you. Any questions for...
Maybe Irene wants to chime in?
Irene?
Or anything I know? Real, just real quick, you were saying about the BPAC only meets every other month. To me, if this is something that the BPAC is going to represent, or want to bring back as a recommendation, they should meet and discuss it as a committee. And as with all the committee commissions and boards, a special meeting can be called of the city council, of committee commissions and boards, if it's something that's really pressing, that you or the committee feel very strongly about. So there are those options available, and so just wanted to let you know in case that wasn't known, but we've done it on the city council. When I was vice mayor, we called a meeting quicker to name Bob Greenberg Field, because he was passing away, and we wanted to make sure we could get it done, it was that important to us, so we could call him at City Hall and let him know of the news. So if there are things that are important, we make the time, and we'll get it done. But I also, excuse me, but I also want to make sure we're going through the channels, because you were saying BPAC, but they're not meeting. So I'm going to assume you're representing BPAC, or you're representing yourself?
No. At this point in time, I'm representing myself. At the last meeting, we created a trail connection subcommittee, but we really haven't had time to even discuss this, because this deadline is within a month and a half.
Okay. And we're not sure of the cost yet?
So I did request, I did request to the planning director to have a special meeting, but this was just yesterday, and we haven't gotten any response. I understand the whole staff has been overwhelmed with so much work. When they are able to respond to me, then we can hold that meeting if possible. But at our last meeting, our engineering and planning liaison just departed, so everything is still in transition at this point in time.
Jeffrey, I, I'd really like to have the whole committee take a look at this in a more comprehensive way.
I'd appreciate it, and I certainly will.
Rather than counsel to rush into this and say, it sounds good, and let's do it. I want to hear from our, you know, commissions, boards, and committees, because that's what you guys do. And if there's interest in that, real interest in it, you can bring back to the council in the future. Maybe you miss a deadline, maybe you don't, but right now, it's a little too nebulous as far as I'm concerned to actually go forward with this.
Okay, I'm working on that. Thank you much.
Okay, thank you. Study session, we had it earlier. If there's nothing else, anything else?
Through the chair?
Irene?
I just want to remind people that we are holding our last Sunday of the month cleanup on San Mateo Avenue at 10 o'clock. We meet behind the Centennial Park in the parking lot there, next to West Coast Cafe, and we clean for an hour, and then we go home. So if you want to join us, I have all the equipment, and we'll, unless it's raining, hopefully. You can do that.
I just want to remind everybody, before our next council meeting, we have an election in the city, so please get out and vote, it's really, really important. One more thing?
Yeah. This Saturday, American Legion Pancake Breakfast, it's a great breakfast, get there at 8:30. I'm probably going to continue cooking there again, if they let me back in. Sorry, Robert. All you can eat, 10 bucks, 8:30 till 11:00, American Legion.
You're supposed to be the deliverer, right?
We'll see about that. Labor laws around here, Robert.
Meeting is adjourned until November 14th.